I call this meeting to the council in order. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the city of Hoover, I am honored to welcome you to this city council organizational meeting and oath of office ceremony for our mayor and council members. Tonight, we celebrate more than a new term. We celebrate dedication, service, and the promise of a brighter future for our community. We are grateful to have our elected officials, their families, friends, and members of our community here with us. I would like to recognize our state and local officials present this evening. Please rise when I call your name, and we will applaud once everyone has been recognized. County Commissioner Mike Boland, State Representative District 47 Mike Shaw, County Commissioner Jimmy Stevens, and State Senator Jabo Wagner. This is a special moment, one that honors service and welcomes new beginnings. Our mayor and council members take their oaths to serve with integrity, uphold the Constitution, and work together to ensure Hoover continues to grow, thrive, and shine as a city we all love. Thank you for being here to share this important milestone with us. Together, we will work to make Hoover stronger, brighter, and better for everyone. If you'll bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today with thankful hearts as we gather for this special occasion of the swearing-in of our mayor and council. We thank you, Lord, for the privilege to be a part of this great city of Hoover and for the men and women who have answered the call to lead and serve. Today, we ask your blessing upon these leaders. Grant them wisdom beyond their own understanding, courage to stand for what is right, and compassion for every citizen they represent. May they lead with humility, integrity, and vision, working to build a community marked by justice, unity, and peace. Lord, we also lift their families and loved ones who support them daily. Bless them with strength, patience, and understanding. Protect their homes with your peace and surround them with your grace. May their families find joy in service and know that their sacrifices help to make our community stronger. Lord, we pray for the people of Hoover to stand together as neighbors, working for the good of all, and supporting those who serve in leadership. May this city be a place where your love is shown through kindness, service, and respect for one another. Bless this ceremony, bless our mayor, our council members, and bless the city of Hoover. May all that is done here bring you glory. In the name of your son, Jesus Christ, amen. Now, we will have the presentation of colors. Let us honor our nation and the principles it represents. It is time to reflect on our sheer commitment to freedom, service, and our community. Please rise. We will now begin the presentation of colors by the Hoover Public Safety Honor Guard, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America, which I will lead. Immediately after, the National Anthem will be performed by Officer Stephen Easterling. Please join me in honoring our nation as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance together. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air! Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there! Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? Next, I will be doing a short bio for our judges, and if they will please come up.
Judge Michael Boland is a lifelong Jefferson County resident that has served as probate judge, associate justice of the Alabama Supreme Court, and currently represents District Five on the Jefferson County Commission. Known for his integrity and leadership, it is our honor to have Judge Boland administer the oath of office. Judge Brad Bishop has decades of service in Alabama's municipal courts, including serving in Hoover's municipal judge and chairing the Alabama Supreme Court's advocacy commission on municipal courts. He is renowned for his fairness, dedication. Judge Reginald Jetter is elected to the Tenth Judicial Circuit in 2016, brings extensive experience as a trial attorney and judge, and he is known for his integrity and civic commitment. Judge Dennis Stevenson has served as a municipal and circuit court judge in Alabama, and he is recognized for his fairness, integrity, and dedication to effective justice.
Yeah, you can just stand here. Are you gonna hide? It's nice to know you.
Hey, Mike, I have you up first. I'm gonna have you up first, then, um...
On behalf of the City of Hoover, I am honored to welcome you to this City Council organizational meeting and oath of office ceremony for our mayor and council members. Tonight, we celebrate more than a new term, we celebrate dedication, service, and the promise of a brighter future for our community. We are grateful to have our elected officials, their families, friends, and members of our community here with us. I would like to recognize our state and local officials present this evening. Please rise when I call your name, and we will applaud once everyone has been recognized. County Commissioner Mike Boland, State Representative District 47 Mike Shaw, County Commissioner Jimmy Stevens, and State Senator Jabo Wagner. This is a special moment, one that honors service and welcomes new beginnings. Our mayor and council members take their oaths to serve with integrity, uphold the Constitution, and work together to ensure Hoover continues to grow, thrive, and shine as a city we all love. Thank you for being here to share this important milestone with us. Together, we will work to make Hoover stronger, brighter, and better for everyone. If you'll bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today with thankful hearts as we gather for this special occasion of the swearing-in of our mayor and council. We thank you, Lord, for the privilege to be a part of this great City of Hoover and for the men and women who have answered the call to lead and serve. Today, we ask your blessing upon these leaders. Grant them wisdom beyond their own understanding, courage to stand for what is right, and compassion for every citizen they represent. May they lead with humility, integrity, and vision, working to build a community marked by justice, unity, and peace. Lord, we also lift their families and loved ones who support them daily. Bless them with strength, patience, and understanding. Protect their homes with your peace and surround them with your grace. May their families find joy in service and know that their sacrifices help to make our community stronger. Lord, we pray for the people of Hoover to stand together as neighbors, working for the good of all, and supporting those who serve in leadership. May this city be a place where your love is shown through kindness, service, and respect for one another. Bless this ceremony, bless our mayor, our council members, and bless the City of Hoover. May all that is done here bring you glory. In the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, amen. Now, we will have the presentation of colors. Let us honor our nation and the principles it represents. It is time to reflect on our sheer commitment to freedom, service, and our community. Please rise. We will now begin the presentation of colors by the Hoover Public Safety Honor Guard, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America, which I will lead. Please join me in honoring our nation as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance together. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Judge Michael Boland is a lifelong Jefferson County resident that has served as probate judge, Associate Justice of the Alabama Supreme Court, and currently represents District Five on the Jefferson County Commission. Known for his integrity and leadership, it is our honor to have Judge Boland administer the oath of office. Judge Brad Bishop has decades of service in Alabama's municipal courts, including serving in Hoover's Municipal Judge and chairing the Alabama Supreme Court's advocacy commission on municipal courts. He is renowned for his fairness, dedication. Judge Reginald Jeter is elected to the Tenth Judicial Circuit in 2016, brings extensive experience as a trial attorney and judge, and he is known for his integrity and civic commitment. Judge Dennis Stevenson has served as a municipal and circuit court judge in Alabama, and he is recognized for his fairness, integrity, and dedication to effective justice. to administer the oath of office for Robin Schultz, Council Member Place Number One, for his oath of office. We also ask Robin Schultz to join the judge at the front, along with his family, who have supported him on every step of the way in his journey to service in the city. Please join me in welcoming him as he comes forward to take the oath of office.
You just fix it so that I can see you just the best you can, bring this lady here. The whole family, please. This is a family thing. This is a great, great thing. So happy for you, and happy for y'all, and happy you guys. I stand one, but this is thirty-three now. All right, at this point in time, because you're going to become a governmental employee, you owe a duty to all the people here, and really to all the people that could come up. She's doing better than I'm doing. For that reason, then, I will administer the oath of office to you at this point in time. If you will, put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Robin Schultz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Alabama.
Of the state of Alabama.
So long as I continue.
So long as I continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Councilman.
So Honorable Judge Michael Boland will be again at the front of the stage to administer the oath of office for Gene Smith, Councilmember Two, for his oath of office. We also ask Gene Smith to join the judge at the front, along with his family, who have supported him and walked beside him, to be back on this journey of service for our city. Please join me in welcoming him as he comes forward to take the oath of office.
Hello, my friend.
How are you, sir?
Come on up here by your husband.
Yeah, turn a little bit. There we go.
Got a crowd after this many years. Got a crowd after this many years.
I tell you, it's wonderful. You're talking to an old boy that grew up in Bluff Park before there was a Hoover. And to have all these people here in this edifice, and have these good people that are running the government, I just tell you, Hoover is in my heart. And for that reason, we're going to put you right back on the City Council, and if you will, kind of turn just a little bit so they can see you. Bring this young lady there, because they will see her when they want to see you. All right. And we're going to get close, and I'll let you hold the Bible. Put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Gene Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Alabama.
Of the state of Alabama.
So long as I continue.
So long as I continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Thank you very much.
I love it.
Appreciate you.
At this time, we invite Honorable Judge Brad Bishop to the front of the stage to administer the oath of office for Ashley Lovell, Councilmember Place Three, for her oath of office. We also ask Ashley Lovell to join the judge at the front, along with her family, who have lifted and strengthened her and shared in her commitment and dedication to her serving this community. Please join me in welcoming her as she comes forward to take the oath of office.
That's good, Ashley. You need to raise your right hand and put your left hand on the Bible. All right, come closer. Ashley, just repeat after me. I, Ashley Lovell.
I, Ashley Lovell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the state of Alabama.
As long as I continue a citizen thereof.
As long as I continue to be a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of City Council.
Of the office of City Council.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
At this time, we invite Honorable Judge Reginald Jeter to the front of the stage to administer the oath of office for Christie Driver. Council Jeter, sorry. Honorable Judge Jeter to the front of the stage to administer the oath of office for Christie Driver, Councilmember Place Four, for her oath of office. We also ask Christie Driver to join the judge at the front, along with her family, who have walked beside her with love and support in her commitment and dedication to serving this community. Please join me in welcoming her as she comes forward to take the oath of office.
It's my absolute pleasure to administer the oath of office to you. Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Christie Driver.
Do solemnly swear that I will.
Do solemnly swear that I will.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the state of Alabama.
So long as I continue.
So long as I continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Faithfully and honestly.
Faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of City Council.
Of the office of City Council.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
At this time, we invite Honorable Judge Dennis Stevenson to the front of the stage to administer the oath of office for Derek Murphy, Councilmember Place Five, for his oath of office. We also ask that Derek Murphy to join the judge at the front, along with his family, whose encouragement and strength have been vital to his devoted service to the citizens of Hoover. Please join me in welcoming him as he comes forward to take the oath of office.
Okay, if you'll raise your right hand, please. I, and state your name.
I, Derek M. Murphy.
Do solemnly swear that I will.
Do solemnly swear that I will.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the state of Alabama.
So long as I continue.
So long as I continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Faithfully and honestly.
Faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of City Council.
Of the office of City Council.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
At this time, we invite Honorable Judge Brad Bishop to the front of the stage to administer the oath of office for Casey Middlebrooks, Councilmember Place Six, for his oath of office. We also ask that Casey Middlebrooks to join the judge at the front, along with his family, who has provided unwavering support and inspiration throughout his dedicated service to this great city. Please join me in welcoming him as he comes forward to take the oath of office.
Put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Casey Middlebrooks.
I, Casey Middlebrooks.
Do solemnly swear that I will.
Do solemnly swear that I will.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the state of Alabama.
As long as I continue a citizen thereof.
As long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties of the office of City Council.
Discharge the duties of the City Council.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
At this time, we invite Honorable Judge Brad Bishop back to the front of the stage to administer the oath of office for Steve McClintock, Councilmember Place Seven, for his oath of office. We also ask that Steve McClintock to join the judge at the front, along with his family, who has stood beside him throughout every challenge and every success with love and encouragement in his service to this city. Please join me in welcoming him as he comes forward to take the oath of office.
Repeat after me. I, Steve McClintock.
I, Steve McClintock.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the state of Alabama.
As long as I continue a citizen thereof.
As long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties of the office of City Council.
Discharge the duties of the office of City Council.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And honor the bill.
At this time, we invite Honorable Judge Michael Boland to the front of the stage to administer the oath of office for Nick Dorzus, Mayor, for his oath of office. We also ask Mayor Dorzus to join the judge at the front, along with his family, who have given him inspiration, encouragement, and support with love for his devotion to serve this city. Please join me in welcoming him as he comes forward to take the oath of office.
Mr. Dorzus, Chief Dorzus, I've been doing this for a lot of years. I have never enjoyed a night like I am enjoying this one tonight. I've never sworn anybody into a mayor or any position that I've known for forty years, known for just forever, and that they've always been a good person with a good heart, and I love Hoover, and this couldn't be better. The group you've got over there to help you, and you, chief, being the mayor, this is just, I guess I'm ready to go up there. I've seen it all.
Don't do that, please.
I won't do it till after this comes up. So if you will, I'll ask you to put your left hand on the Bible, and raise your right hand, turn around just a little bit, there we go, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Nicholas Charles Dorzus.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Alabama.
The state of Alabama.
So long as I consider.
So long as I consider.
Become a citizen thereof.
Citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mayor.
I will now call the roll. Council Place One, Robin Schultz. Just get your mic, and just say here, or present. It's on. Council Place Two, Gene Smith.
Present.
Council Place Three, Ashley Lovell.
Present.
Council Place Four, Christie Driver.
Here.
Council Place Five, Derek Murphy.
Present.
Council Place Six, Casey Middlebrooks.
Here.
Council Place Seven, Steve McClintock.
Here.
Members of the council, thank you for your attendance. We now come to the election of our council president for the coming term. The council will choose one of its own to serve as president. At this time, I will open the floor for nominations. Any member may make a nomination for the office of president. Once nominations are closed, we will proceed to a vote. The candidate who receives a majority of votes will be declared elected and will assume the duties immediately. I invite nominations for the office of council president.
Madam City Clerk, nominate.
Madam City Clerk nominate Casey Middlebrook as council president.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations for the position of council president? Okay, hearing none, the nominations are now closed. Council members, you will now proceed to vote on the position of council president. Can I have a motion for Casey Middlebrooks for council president?
A motion we approve Casey Middlebrook for council president.
Second.
Will those in favor of electing Casey Middlebrooks for council president, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. Next, next on the agenda is the presentation of the gavel to the incoming city council president. It is my honor to invite the incoming city council president, Casey Middlebrooks, to join us at the center stage. The gavel is a longstanding symbol of leadership and authority. Its presentation represents the trust and responsibility placed on the presiding officer to guide the work of the city council with fairness, integrity, and respect. May this act serve as a reminder of the importance of service, collaboration, and dedication to the public good. Congratulations, Casey Middlebrooks, on your appointment as city council president. We look forward to your leadership and continued service to the citizens of Hoover.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will now take a motion for the election of council president pro temp.
As president, I would nominate Christie Driver as council president pro temp.
Second.
I have a nomination for Christie Driver as council pro temp. Any others? I'll now take a motion to elect Christie Driver as council president pro temp.
As president, I note we make a motion to approve Christie Driver as council pro temp president.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Council place one, Robin Schulz.
Aye.
Council place two, Jean Smith.
Aye.
Council place three, Ashley Lovell.
Aye.
Council place four, Christie Driver.
Aye.
Council place five, Derek Murphy.
Aye.
Council place seven, Steve McClintock.
Aye.
Council president, Casey Middlebrooks.
Aye.
With a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, Christie Driver is elected as president pro temp. Resolution number 8640-25, resolution appointing a council liaison to the Planning and Zoning Commission. For this appointment, we have Christie Driver. Do I hear a motion?
Motion, we approve resolution number 8640-25.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion passes. Christie Driver is named as council liaison to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Resolution number 8641-25, a resolution appointing Wendy Dickerson as the city clerk for the city of Hoover, Alabama. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion, we approve a resolution number 8640-125.
Second.
Any comments? For approval, all saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it. Wendy Dickerson is city clerk for the city of Hoover. Resolution number 8642-25, a resolution concurring with the mayor's appointment of Charlie Waldrop as the city attorney for the city of Hoover, Alabama. Do I have a motion?
A great honor. I would like to make a motion to approve resolution 8642-25.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, Charlie. Resolution number 8643-25, resolution appointing Brad Bishop as the presiding municipal judge for the city of Hoover, Alabama.
Approve, we move resolution number 8643-25.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, resolution passes. Judge Brad Bishop will be the presiding municipal judge for the city of Hoover. Resolution number 8644-25, a resolution appointing the municipal prosecutor and the assistant prosecutor for the city of Hoover, Alabama.
Move, we approve resolution number 8644-25.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes, yes, sir.
We need to identify those two individuals.
Madam Clerk, can you read the resolution for us?
Charlie Waldrop for lead municipal prosecutor and Daniel Wayne Scott for assistant prosecutor.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Resolution number 8645-25, a resolution appointing public defenders for the city of Hoover, Alabama.
Harley Barnes for the lead public defender and Wakisha Hazard for the public defender.
Move, we approve resolution 8645-25.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Resolution number 8645-25 passes. Resolution number 8646-25, resolution appointing magistrates for the city of Hoover, Alabama.
We have Susan Fuquay for the court director, Marcia Vettito, assistant court director, Irene Cruz, magistrate specialist, Leandre Burks, magistrate, Anna McRae, magistrate, Joseph Ritchie, magistrate, Jason Simpson, magistrate.
Move, we approve resolution number 8646-25.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Resolution number 8646-25 passes. Resolution number 8647-25, a resolution appointing approving account information for Regions Bank and Wells Fargo Bank for the city of Hoover, Alabama.
Motion, we approve resolution 8647-25.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Resolution number 8647-25 passes. Ordinance number 252682, an ordinance of the city of Hoover to repeal the city council rules and procedure of the municipal code of the city of Hoover, Alabama, and to repeal all ordinances and parts of the ordinances of the city of Hoover in conflict therewith.
We immediately consider ordinance 252682.
Second.
I need this for immediate consideration.
I have a motion and a second for immediate consideration. It will require unanimous consent. Roll call vote, please.
Council place one, Robin Schulz.
Aye.
Council place two, Jean Smith.
Aye.
Council place three, Ashley Lovell.
Aye.
Council place four, Christie Driver.
Aye.
Council place five, Derek Murphy.
Aye.
Council place seven, Steve McClintock.
Aye.
Council president, Casey Middlebrooks.
Aye.
With seven ayes, we can now vote on the ordinance number 252682.
Motion, we approve ordinance 252682.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, ordinance number 252682 passes. Resolution 8648-25, a resolution adopting rules and procedures for the city council of the city of Hoover, Alabama.
Motion, we approve resolution 8648-25.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments from council?
Mr. President, all of us that read this document can tell that a lot of work went into these rules and procedures. I'm not sure who all participated in this, but it was a great effort. Wonderful document. I think that it'd be nice if we could place this on the city website as soon as possible so the public can become aware of what our new policies are going to be.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Ms. Dickerson, can you make sure this is posted on the city website?
Yes, it will be.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second for resolution number 8648-25. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Resolution number 8648-25 passes. Announcements, I'm going to take a point of privilege here. I'll go first. I think it's important that we always recognize those that invest in us. So at this time, I'm going to recognize two special guests in the audience, Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus. Their aliases are David and Amelia Odom. Ms. Odom, will you please stand? Ms. Odom, so as a young kid growing up in eclectic Alabama, I had a pretty bad speech impediment. As a kid, I was extremely shy. I would get frustrated and embarrassed because people couldn't understand what I was saying. Ms. Odom was my speech teacher, growing up, for many years. She invested in me toward her love and patience and expertise in me. I think we all have those teachers that make a special mark on our lives. So for that, I wanted to recognize her and thank her for helping me find my voice. Thank you, Ms. Odom. Any other council comments tonight? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Council President. First of all, I would like to thank all of our family and friends for coming tonight for our first special call to council meeting. And I would also like to invite everyone to our Veterans Day breakfast, which will be this coming Friday, 8:30, at the Finney Center. Everyone's invited, regardless if you're a veteran or not. We live in the greatest country in the world, and please, please come enjoy a great hour of celebration with us. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.